Good evening. Today is Monday, December 18th, 2023. We will now call the City Council Regular Meeting to order at 6:43 PM. Item number two, our roll call of council. We do have a quorum of council. Item number three is our pledge. We have our pledge will be led by Missouri City Boy Scout Troop 659. Thank you. All right. Item number four are, we have some presentations and recognition. We'll start off with item 4A is a recognition of the 2023 Missouri City Eagle Scout. We have several Eagle Scouts who are here today, so thank you all for coming. We will have Allen White, Councilmember Jeffrey Alboni of District B to go ahead and do the honors.
Good evening, everyone. Can y'all hear me? All right, good evening, everyone. Oh, come on. Y'all could do better than that. Good evening, everyone. All right, that's what I'm talking about. We're here to celebrate some young men who have accomplished something that is a huge feat. Many of you have heard of the Cub Scouts, as you just saw, who gave us the Pledge of Allegiance. The Boy Scouts, there is another rank, the highest rank in scouting, and it's called Eagle Scouts. And I want you in advance of them coming up to give them a round of applause for this huge accomplishment. Thank you, thank you. And so to become an Eagle Scout, I want to say that there are several things that you have to do. You have to, you know, hold various leadership roles. You have to exhibit a lot of outdoor skills. You have to do a comprehensive community service project, and you have to earn 21 merit badges amongst other things. So there's a lot of things that must be done in order to become an Eagle Scout. And these individuals today that we're honoring did that very thing. And so I'm going to announce them as they come and kind of give you a little bit of information. And I would like to ask all of council to come down right now as we celebrate these young men. The first individual is, and I want to make sure I pronounce it correctly. If I didn't get it right, you know, don't beat me up. Just let me know the correct saying. It's Ayen Khan. Is that correct? I got it right? What did, give it to me. Ayen Khan, Troop 731 Eagle Scout. All right. I want to read a little something about Ayen and his accomplishment. He completely renovated the courtyard at Lexington Creek Elementary in Missouri City, including mulching, building benches, and more. Let's give it up for Ayen. And we're going to take a picture with you. All right. Let me just get you to stand over here while we call the rest. All right. Next is Cole Metz. Is that correct? Cole Metz. He's standing right there in the middle there. Cole is Troop 1852. He built picnic tables for the John Hargrove Environmental Complex in Pearland. Give it up for Cole. Open that up. We're going to take a picture with you. Next is Christopher Schop. Did I get that right? All right. Christopher Schop. All right. Thank you so much. Troop 1424. He renovated the playground at New Hope Lutheran Church in Missouri City. Two benches were also built to allow parents to sit while their children play on the playground. Next is Charles Jamison White. Troop 1424. He built a fence enclosing the front yard of Three Little Pities, all animal rescue. Hey, you go over to that side right there. Yeah, trying to make room for everybody. All right. Kyle Damonoski. Did I get that right? All right. Troop 1424. He built an outdoor picnic area for St. Angela Medici Catholic Church in Missouri City. All right, next. Vicente Dean. Yeah, I got that right. Troop 1424. He performed cleanup and restoration of a Quail Valley Elementary outdoor classroom in Missouri City. Ian Michael Morris. Troop 1424. He built 122 feet of fencing around Three Little Pities Rescue in Friendswood. Kevin Hugh. Did I get that right? All right, there it is. All right. Troop 659. He built carts and dollys for the Elkins High School Band in Missouri City. All right. All right. Chance Jamarcus Coney. Did I get that right? Troop 659. He created sensory boards for the special education program for Fort Ben ISD Willeridge High School. On the home stretch. Vince Cyril Jose? Jost, yes. Like Mr. Jost that came to visit us. I should have known that. All right. Troop 659 built wooden trash receptacles for the Kanaya Catholic Community Center in Missouri City. Jacob R. Vara. All right, let's give it up. Troop 659. He built and installed fishing line recycling bins at Buffalo Run Park in Missouri City. All right. Logan M. Choppin. Troop 659. He built a progressive composting bin for Main Street Ministries. And last but not least, Gabriel Grayson Piewaar. Yes. Troop 140. He built a large wooden cart and rolling chest of drawers for Newman Chapel United Methodist Church in Kendallton. All right, we're going to ask all of you to come back up. We're going to take a large group photo. I want to thank the mayor for giving me these tongue twister words and things. And hey, I see. I thank you. Next year, we're going to have the Fort Ben. You know how they do with the graduations? You got it in advance. You got to get a pronunciation.
All right, next. We're going to jump to 4C, which is a recognition of Anias Smith, 2023 Snow Fest Parade Grand Marshal. I'm going to have Councilmember Anthony Morales come down here to give you all a little conversation. Talk about what's happening and kind of the gift that he's going to give.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, Anias, before we start, if you notice, the mayor's wearing maroon, man. And the other thing is, he is the 12th mayor of Missouri City, so I E 12th man. All right, you got that? It's an honor to be up here to thank you for being our host, our grand marshal, our leader of the city. Just a quick comment. The mayor and I were at a restaurant eating one day, and A&amp;M was playing. I go, hey, mayor, she's number zero. That guy's going to make it big one day, and he lives in District C. And he goes, hey, let's put together a plan. Let's have him being a grand marshal. So he and staff worked really, really hard to have Anias be our grand marshal. We've known Anias since high school. He is a great leader. He's a man of faith, comes from a great family. I'm trying to find his mom right now. Mama, he's a man of faith. It comes from a great family, and he's going pro this year. So we look forward to a really bright future in Anias Smith. With that said, we have a couple of things we want to present to you tonight. I don't know if you want to say a few words, and then we can bring council.
So he's right. We were talking about Missouri City heroes. And, you know, there's a lot of Missouri City heroes that are out here that's grown up in this community. Now, Anias was the first one that we started for grand marshal. And as I've said it to the committee, moving forward, you know, for the Snow Fest Parade, you know, instead of the mayor and council, we will come up with someone in our own community, whether it's high school or what have you, someone that we can look up to in the community to continue this tradition of Snow Fest Parade that we've been having for 40 years. And so we'll start with, we had the 40th and moving forward, because it's just a great, you know, a lot of us, even including myself, are not aware of all the local heroes that we have here in this community. But it's time to embrace them. It's time to bring them forward and make them part of this community. And of course, we know that once they move up, they may not live in Missouri City. They may move around. But it's an opportunity for them to come back to Missouri City and become the heroes of those kids or the community that they grew up in, and hopefully that you come back and give back to the community. So that's the message in here. So we were excited. We have some special gifts for you. So with that, I'm going to hand it over if I can have all of our council members to come down, because it was a joint effort. And we had a great celebration. And of course, I don't have any football that you can throw around, but thank you. And I want to also thank the staff. When we talk about staff, Gerald and City Secretary's Office, our police, our fire, our Parks Department, so many that worked so hard to make this happen for you. So I see Jason has something here for you as well as we have something for you as a gift as well.
Yeah, Anias, I'd like for you to say a few words, but before we do so, this was on the parade. Hold this. So that was on the trailer. So we want to take that back to the NFL. And then we also have something else for you. Mom, you can come up here and take pictures.
All right.
All right.
Oh, wow. And let me just say something about this real quick. So I'm going to have you hold it. So with everything else, in the last minute, we had to get some shirts. He wears Zero and Sub-Zero, as he calls it. So we had to get the color. Instead of A&amp;M, we had to get hashtag Missouri City Proud, and then his number, and then with some pictures from that day when we had the parade. And then, of course, our city manager, city secretary, city attorney, and council members signed it for him. So when you get that NFL contract and you have that big game room, don't forget about us. So make sure it's hung up there that says Missouri City, Texas Proud. So I'd like to invite the three appointed officials to join us as well, because we have your signature on them as well.
This is going to be worth a lot of money.
Man, in my house, though. Worth a lot of money in my house.
Oh, yeah. Come on, my mom. Dad.
Anias, it's your opportunity.
First off, man, I just want to thank God. Thank everybody that's up here. Thank you, Mr. Morales, for the opportunity. You know what I'm saying? Thank you for everybody that's a part of the city, everybody that works for the city. Thank y'all for this opportunity today. I appreciate everybody showing up. One thing I definitely want to say, I know you were saying how hopefully I'll come back to the city. I'm definitely coming back. There's no question. Definitely going to come back and give back. One thing, another thing that I also wanted to say, my parents, I just want to thank y'all so much. Without y'all, I wouldn't be here at all. I really wasn't expected to talk for real, but nah, I just want to give thanks. You know what I'm saying? I'm truly blessed to be able to be able to step into this opportunity, you know what I'm saying? Step into this role, this leadership role, and really just continue to grow my faith and make this city stronger.
All right. Next item on the presentation of recognition is to administer oath of office for the 2023-2024 Mayor's Youth Commission Officers. We have historian Anika Hong. Come on up. We have our secretary Annie Chen, Ann Chen. We have our vice president Ann Antony. We have our president Dylan Barrow. Just repeat after me, okay? So when I say your name, so just make sure you say your own name, okay? Ready? Aye.
Aye. Dylan Barrow.
All right. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Say your office.
Vice President.
Okay. Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to, to the best.
And will to, to the best.
Of my ability.
Of my ability.
To preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Give them a round of applause.
So hello, everybody. I'm Dylan. As you guys know by now, president of MYC, and I'm very excited about this year. I want to, we're going to bring in some new energy, and we're going to start being more active in our community and start getting MYC more involved in planning events and activities, because that's what we really want to do. We want to bring the youth initiative and youth advice and the youth perspective to Missouri City and make sure that everyone here can just see what the future and what we have to bring to the table. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ann Antony. I'm the vice president of the Mayor's Youth Committee. I'm very excited to have this role, and I look forward to working with all of you in order to make the even better. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ann Chen. I'm very honored to serve as the secretary of the Mayor's Youth Commission this year. And same as everyone else, I'm just really excited to step into this position and help make our city a better place.
My name is Annika Hong, and I just want to say how grateful I am to get the role of historian, and I can't wait to show you guys our experiences through pictures.
Just so you know, we have, how many total members? 60 this year? 67? 67 members? 79 members. 79 members this year on Mayor's Youth Commission. So this has been the biggest, the Mayor's Youth Commission that we ever had. And y'all know that this was started in 1994, not by me. And these are all the kids that, some of them have been part of this Mayor's Youth Commission for several years, because it starts in middle school and into high school. And we want to also take this opportunity to thank all the sponsors that come at the end when we have their final graduation and doing this. A big kudos to your Parks Department, because they do a lot of work to get these guys up and going. And if you were there at the Snow Fest Parade, you noticed that a lot of volunteer hours have been going, and them doing the work, and they're kind of involved in the city. And they even have an actual election that takes place amongst all of their peers that vote for them. So if you see that shirt, MYC, so you know that they're Missouri City residents and Missouri City high school students. So please congratulate them for doing this great job. Thank you all. Look forward to a 23-24. All right. All the promises you're going to keep? You going to keep all the promises? Thank you. All right. Can I get the council to come out too? Just me? All right. Thank you all. Item number five are public comments. Madam, City Secretary, do we have any public comments?
No, sir. Mr. Mayor, there are none.
There are none. Okay. Item number six, our staff report. 6A should receive a presentation of Missouri City's Parks Foundation.
Mr. Mayor, I received one form, and that form was received at 6:41.
6:41?
Yes, sir.
One form? Okay. We'll let that one person speak.
Mr. Mayor, there are actually two.
There are actually two?
Yes, sir.
Any came in at one time?
The other one came in at 6:30, from my understanding, just now.
Do we put timestamps onto these things, or how do we?
Normally, they would either put them in the box, and when we, we would pick them up that way. Or if I am here at the dais, they would give it to me, or in my absence, Jerel is also here.
Mayor.
Mayor, if I could.
Yeah.
Whoever these two individuals are, took the time to come out and to say some things at public comment, so I would ask that we allow both of them to provide their input.
Sure. So just as we'll go ahead and, you know, any objections to that, anyone?
No.
Okay, so as we moving forward, we just wanna clarify that it should be in by six thirty to the City Secretary or Deputy City Secretary. And if not, right at that desk where it says City Secretary, you can leave it right about her name. So this way, as she collects them, so we'll have room forward. So with that, go ahead.
Bruce Zabrowski. Mr. Zabrowski, please state your name and address for the record, and please adhere to the three-minute time limit.
Bruce Zabrowski, seven-nine-one-five, Chancellor, Houston, Texas. We did put the information up there, the City Secretary was not sitting at her desk. So she had the information, the meeting wasn't called. So, you know, trying to stop somebody from speaking for a technicality like that is totally ridiculous, and it further displays the competence of this council. I'm just tired of it, and it's another ethic issue which I like to talk about. You have people up here taking CARES Act money on council, voting on things, that's an ethics violation, nothing happens to them. You have a person on this council who tries to give a fellow worker, friend of mine, trouble on his job for speaking and calling the mayor a dictator, trouble on his job. You have a person on this council who's having trouble running a homeowners association in South Meadow and is having legal actions with it, that's an ethics problem. So I'm tired of this nonsense of Missouri City. You need to get your act together and start running the city properly and representing all of Missouri City and not just certain areas to get all the attention, thank you.
Guy Sullaway. Mr. Sullaway, please state your name and address for the record.
Sure, Guy Sullaway, I live at thirty-five fourteen Cross Creek Court in Missouri City, and I'm President of Quail Valley Proud, so Mayor, City Council, staff, thanks. Just wanna give you a quick report, Quail Valley Proud had our tenth annual Jingle All the Way on Friday, and I know the city had taken an interest in it, so I thought I'd tell you how it went. It rained, right? But besides that, we had over eight hundred residents register for carriage and hayrides. We had some cancellations, we ended up riding almost six hundred people, though. They came out, sat through the rain. It went extremely well, we had added hayrides to accommodate the overflow, that went really well. Because of the weather, we moved in, moved some stuff inside. We moved our crafts, letters to the Veterans Hospital, our pictures with Santa, we moved to the inside. I wanna say, working with Kelly, Jarrett, Liz, Lisette, Amy, the staff at City Center was fabulous about helping us do that. Made our day go really, really well. At the end, everything came off as planned, we ended up with our, as I say, our biggest jingle event ever, ever, and we got a lot of good compliments. There's a picture of Floyd and I standing in front of a couple of mules, it was pointed out to me. But we had a really good time and it came off very, very well, so anyway, thanks for y'all's support. Hope to see y'all next year, come out and ride with us when it's not raining.
All right, thank you. So before we move on to the item, I just wanna clarify something with City Secretary's office, both the Deputy City Secretary and the City Secretary. When we have these forms that are signed up to speak, make sure that we have it on you or either one of you at the time of six thirty when our meeting starts, so this way we don't have any of these issues. You know, as all of us, we're not trying to stop anyone from speaking, but we have a cutoff. There's, everything has a rule, so six thirty is the time, that's the six thirty is the time. I need somebody to put a stamp on those requests that's saying that it's received, could be a quick initial or something, so we don't have this going back and forth. As to calling the City Council out for not allowing people to speak on the time, so six thirty is a cutoff time, so just wanna make sure you're clear with that. Thank you. Item number six, our staff report, six-eight, receive a presentation, Missouri City's Parks Foundation Annual Report. We have a presentation by Anthony Snipes, who is the President of Missouri City's Parks Foundation. Mr. Snipes.
Thank you very much, Mayor, let me just first of all say that I truly appreciate the service that each of you put forth to run our city. Public service sometimes a thankless job, but you do it well, and I just want you to know we truly appreciate the service that you're doing to make our city great. My name is Anthony Snipes, I live here in Missouri City, forty-three eleven, Missouri City. I'm here as the guest presenter to provide you with our annual required foundation annual report. I don't know if we have it loaded. I would like to say, I think a year ago, our new city manager, our dynamic city manager came on board, so I'm gonna make sure I give her a minute. So one of the things that we are very happy about is the work that we're doing related to our foundation. We are a five oh one C three foundation that was organized exclusively for charitable and educational purposes allowed by law. Our role, quite frankly, is to support this city and our Parks Department in supporting the twenty-one developed parks and fourteen point four miles of trails that are in our great city. We have five current board members, we recently had two resignations, but we are working very hard to recommend new members to you so that we can get the work done of the foundation. We've been very fortunate to raise over one point five million dollars to support this city. All of our dollars are within the confines of Missouri City, Texas. As relates to our board, I'm very happy that one of our board members, Tom Nichols, who does a tremendous and a yeoman's job in our community, he and Regina are here. I wanna thank them for coming to support the presentation, but these are the current five board members that are part of the foundation currently. During the tail end of the spring and fall, we had our retreat, and we identified a number of priorities as relates to as we try to grow our board, needs and things that were important. And some of the things that came up from the board members were fund development expertise, nonprofit expertise, engineering and construction, as well as finance. And these individuals, based on recommendation of several of the board members, I was tasked to go out and see if they would serve, and hopefully this council will support in the near future these individuals, so we can have a quorum to move forward with the work of the foundation. Our strategic focus is that of the cities, to provide support for our parks, recreation, and open space master plan. We've been doing that since our beginning, and we'll continue to do that, whether that's through parks, supporting parks and providing dollars, or through our veterans memorials. We've done all of that over the course of the last several years. As relates to what we feel is important, we feel engaging community organizations to enhance programming throughout the city is important. We do that by taking support for the annual Snow Fest, the Fourth of July Celebration, as well as other initiatives that are important to the city. We're very fortunate, speaking of the Mayor's Youth Council, we awarded seven thousand dollars in scholarships to the Mayor's Youth Council through donations that came through the foundation this past year. And we continue to provide park benches to designated park locations, as well as we encourage the community to continue to support our Paver Program, because we do have room at our Veterans Memorial. Commitment to youth, we just alluded to the seven thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three, but we understand that it's important when we invest in parks, living space, green space, all of that is investing in our future youth, and that's really what we're about, to assist the Parks Department in achieving their goals. We've created and maintained a number of new community partnerships, I'm not gonna go through all of them. All of them have supported not only the foundation, but also Missouri City. And we feel it's important that we continue to let all of our corporate entities that, northwest, south, and east, to come and support our efforts, because if they can support us, it makes our job much easier as we move forward. Exploring and cultivating key partnerships, over the course of the last two months, we launched our number one priority, which is the East Hampton Park, and we've been very, very elated to have conversations with the Houston Endowment, the George Foundation, and the Kinder Foundation. I was told ten years, I can tell you, I'm not waiting ten years to get that, that vision to come to fruition. We're trying to do it in a year or two, and they're very excited about the proposal that we've put forth, and our hope is that we'll be able to continue to partner with the city to get that completed sooner than later. Fund development continues to be a high priority in revenue generation, not only in supporting Missouri City, but also operationally supporting the foundation as we go forth and try to be sustainable as a nonprofit organization. As we stated, we launched our East Hampton fundraising efforts in October. We have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars that has been raised to date. Of course, there's been a lot of investment in that park already. Our goal is to try to establish a matching initiative with all of the foundations so that we can expeditiously achieve our four point five million dollar goal. Lastly, I think this is close to the end, we're very happy with the board that we have. We've stressed the importance of all of our board members contributing, not just asking for money, but being a part of, coming out of their own pockets to support. And since I've been on the board, all of our board members have one hundred percent contributed to be a part of that, and that's one of the things foundations ask, what are your board members doing, how are they contributing? And I'm happy to say we're a hundred percent. East Hampton is our priorities, I would just like to end by saying special thanks to Donnie Hayes, Danielle Stewart, and Stacy Silver for their work from a park standpoint. We're very happy, and our goal is to continue to be financially sound, to achieve our priority project success ahead of schedule, and that's East Hampton, and to support the Parks Master Plan. We are a unique nonprofit, we're five oh one C three, I don't think there's no other Board of Commission that has that distinction, but what we wanna do is to let the council and the mayor know that we're here to support you and to do all that we can to make sure that Missouri City gets our best. That concludes my report, Mayor.
All right, thank you, if anyone have any questions or comments, please sign up, I did sign up. I just wanna say, take this opportunity to say, as a President of the Parks, you know, Foundation, I wanna thank you for your work, thank you for collaborating with our parks, but also with NYC and with others, looking forward to even a successful other groups that you're adding to it, will make it, and this will be a greater twenty twenty-four year, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor, appreciate it.
I'm going to, if you don't mind, I'm going to recognize, there's a few people, Councilmember Riley.
Thank you, Mayor, Anthony, before you leave the podium, I was gonna give you your flowers while you're still here, but I wanna echo the mayor's sentiments as well, and as everybody knows, that this particular parkland is located in District A, and it's something that the council did early on when I joined council. And so I'm very passionate about it, and I see your passion and the board's passion about getting this park, you know, developed, and I just wanna say thank you from the bottom of my heart for taking on this, you know, project and being so progressive and aggressive about raising the money, as well as working with our team, they're amazing. And I just really, really appreciate, and the residents, they're so excited, looking forward to what the future's gonna hold over there in that area, so thank you again.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it.
Thank you, recognizing Mayor Protem Emery.
Anthony, I want to also echo the comments that were made earlier about your dedication to the Parks Foundation. And I know that you've done yeoman's work, and I'm really excited that you've been able to identify five additional individuals who are, appear to be great candidates for, for the, the foundation. So again, you know, a lot of times that's difficult trying to get people to, to step up to the plate, and you and the rest of your foundation board, you know, I think has done a, a great job of bringing those additional people to the, to the foundation, so keep up the good work, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman.
Thank you, recognizing Councilmember Klausur.
Yes, Anthony, I just wanna say thank you so much for all that you do and the way you continue to lead, and you lead with such enthusiasm, no matter what has happened, and I just, I admire you. You're one of my heroes here in Missouri City, I'm being very serious. And, you know, you've, you've, you just continue to hold your head up, and you lead, and you lead with integrity, and I just wanna say thank you for all that you're doing for the Parks Foundation and just, and for the community. You do so much in the community, so I just wanna thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Rob Marshall.
Thank you so much, Mayor, Anthony, thank you for everything that you do. By virtue of your report on tonight, there are so many that if they're listening to the wrong voices that are being said, the city would be led to believe that nothing great is happening over on that fondering end of town, and that's simply not true. Even to see that subdivision put forth their own money from that homeowners association, that's a testament that they even believe in what you and the Parks Foundation are doing. So keep up the great work, don't stop, if, if there's another parcel of land somewhere in the city, hey, we'll figure it out. Please keep it up, okay, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Recognizing Councilmember Boni.
Thank you so much, Mayor, so Anthony, you know, I appreciate the reports and you always being, you know, so diligent and providing us all the information that we could ever ask for that we can go back and look to, that institutional knowledge is so helpful. And I know that, you know, your engagement and involvement with this, even as city manager, with this Veterans Memorial and some of the things that the Parks Foundation continuously has done to try to support that effort, and I believe there's some other phases that's supposed to be happening with that, that's a conversation for another day. I think that it's a testament of, you know, how involved and engaged and knowledgeable you are about the things that we need to do to make sure our parks have everything that they need, as well as our future parks. So thank you so much for taking on this endeavor with East Hampton, and hopefully we'll get you, well, you all will be able to raise the money in order to help move this forward, thank you.
We only have one person left, Councilmember Morales.
A and A.
Anthony, some of us had the luxury to serve with you, and your vision of Together Excel still exists today, and that's, I believe, what's going on with this foundation, is together you will excel, we will excel. My question to you is, what can we do as council to help you?
Well, I think over the course of the next year, as we engage corporations and, and, and foundations, it's gonna be important to, to leverage, there's a large, you know, from a city standpoint, there's some dollars and resources that can, can support some of the initiatives that are in the master plan that you have endorsed. So our hope is, we, we met with the George Foundation, not George Foundation, the Brown Foundation recently, and the Parks Director was on that call with us, and they were very elated that not only was the foundation on the call, but the Parks Director was on the call about how we are collaborating to impact East Hampton. And from that, he introduced us to other foundations and say, get on board. That's what we're trying to do, and I think, you know, there's a saying, along you can, we can do so, along we can do so little, together we can do so much, so we're focused in on trying to bring all individuals together so we can make impact.
Anthony, I have, I've signed up myself one more time, just to say a thing, you said, you came up here and started saying that as elected officials, you know, it's a thankless job. But I wanna let you know that even on the foundation, when this park was purchased through, there were several community events that took place in that community, went over some of these projects and, and itemizing what the people needed, you know, and all of that. You can very well have this be, go through the process, but just be strong, understand that it doesn't take one person to come up here and talk on public comments to knock it all down. But it takes the whole community that's behind you and behind the Parks Department, behind the council, that addressed all of these issues, what they're looking for, what they're needing, understood that we can't, you can't give everything what the people are asked for, but understand that we appreciate what you're doing and the foundation for keeping up. And when it all's set and done, we wanted to celebrate the whole thing with you and with our council, our staff, and our community, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, you have my commitment, and I leave you with one word, resiliency. That's what you are, that's what this community is, and I know we shall prevail, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm number seven, our consent agenda. Oh, wait, that's the one you had up. For this item or the one before?
Well, I was just gonna ask that, item six, G, people? I mean, seven, G.
Seven, G, okay, so that's your motion, is there a second? Second. And so I have, guys, I have Rob Marshall here has made the motion, seconded by Emery.
I think they were gonna approve the. I think they were gonna approve the...
Oh, so, then which, which one, which one is it? It's Councilmember Boni is the one that made the motion.
I think the motion that's in the queue are probably those who are gonna support all items, but...
Okay, so can we clear? We'll just approve with the amendment. Can you, uh...
I'm good with that. I'll make the motion and we accept items A and F. Will that be your second?
Okay. So, there's been a motion and a second. And let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, we'll go to seven...
G. Yeah, so, Mayor, the reason that I, I don't need a full presentation, I actually had a question of city attorney and the Parks Director, or, yeah. It's, it's just in relation to House Bill 1526 that was passed. I know it was applicable to Texas cities that are 800,000 population and higher, but I know that there was some discussion in the past about the dedication, parkland dedication fees, and I, as we're doing these parkland dedications, I know we've done them for a period of time, has there been any discussions about us updating our parkland dedication fees or the need to do it? I know it's not, in Austin, they just did it because it was, they were obligated to do it, but is that something that we need to be looking at or we are required to do?
And I can, if the director doesn't mind, that is something that we can take a look at. I have not actually looked at that bill. If it applies to cities over 800,000, it wouldn't apply to Missouri City, but we can certainly take a look at that and come back with a recommendation as to whether or not that is appropriate.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we're, you know, current with what other cities are doing across, not just the state of Texas, for this period, and to make sure that we're not shorting ourselves and, and not making enough money based off of what we're allowing. We have a little bit of land left, so it would be helpful to kind of know where we, where we stand on that. So, thank you.
And just from the Parks and Recreation Department, I know that over the six months that I've been here, there have been a couple of just internal discussions about that, you know, city code. I know it's definitely something that we're currently beginning to look at, so hopefully in the next year or so, we'll be working with management and talking about that even further. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion for seven, G? Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Boni, seconded by Councilmember Klausser. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Item eight, our appointments, eighth aid consideration and possible action for electing Mayor Protem. So, Crystal, Ron.
Mr. Mayor, the charter states that the council shall elect a Mayor Protem at the second meeting each year in December.
Okay, thank you. You, I see you're in the room. Yes, okay. What is the motion? Motion is to place Council Lady... Let me see, what's the name? Lady, Sonia Brown Marshall. I'll break it.
At Large, number two.
At Large, J, or two? I'm sorry. Yes. Lynn Klausser to be the next Mayor Protem. That's my motion. Okay, thank you. Is that your second? Okay, so, during the discussion, so, I'll place myself in the queue. I just want to take this time to thank our Mayor Protem. Until this vote's gonna be taken, we got a few seconds. Lord Emery, distinctly, thank you for serving for this whole year since last year on this time. I appreciate those meetings that you attended on our behalf, but also on my behalf, and some of those that you were able to go that I couldn't make it to. So, thank you for a great year, and I hope you had a great time doing it. Thank you so much with that. End my comment, there's other people that I'm gonna jump to. Councilmember Marulas, recognize.
Yeah, having served Mayor Protem, having served Mayor Protem under Mayor Alakat can be fun. So, publicly, thank you, Mayor Protem Emery. You represented us well, you stepped up when it was time, and you left a lasting impression, and we appreciate what you did.
Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember what?
I did show those sentiments, but personally, thank you so much for everything that you've done and stepping up, even when it was short notice, change of opportunity. And then also, just thank you for it being also an opportunity for us to, to see your leadership over all these years that you have served. You could just continue to serve with just beauty and grace, and the fact that you are the best dressed holiday man today.
Thanks, thank you. Thank you.
Just appreciate you so much. And to Councilmember Lynn Klausser, if everybody decides to vote in her favor unanimously, we look forward to serving as well with you under your leadership as the next Mayor Protem. And so, I'm just gonna say congratulations in advance. You have my vote.
Recognizing Councilmember Boni.
I just wanted to say, job well done, Mayor Protem Emery, for the next few seconds. And, you know, this is your second rodeo, serving in this capacity. And so, you know, I knew that when you had asked to serve again, that you would definitely do so with distinction, and I too have served as Mayor Protem under the Alakat regime. And, and I must say that you have to be Johnny on the spot and ready to go. So, Councilwoman Klausser, if in fact you are voted as the Mayor Protem, get ready. Get ready, get ready, get ready.
All right. Recognizing Councilmember Klausser.
Yes, it has been an honor being next to you, helping you work all your stuff over here, but your knowledge, you, you're the most senior council member here, and your knowledge, we need your knowledge, and we have needed it. And so, I appreciate you stepping up in the mayor's absence, even on latest Saturday, you stepped in when mayor couldn't attend the veterans luncheon, and you stepped in, gave words, and you even gave the prayer. You gotta step up your game, Mayor. But it's, it's, it's a tall task, I know. You always gotta be ready for something, but I just want to say thank you for, for stepping up to lead and serving.
Recognizing the Mayor Protem. Last time I said, Emery.
Well, thank, thanks for all those kind words, you know, and I appreciate talking about the most senior and have to be tall and step up. Those are, those are things that I have never really thought that much about, but it, it's, it's really been an honor and a privilege to fulfill the, the obligations of the Mayor Protem for this last year, and it wasn't that bad, Robin. Yeah.
I give you an extra minute today at council comments.
But again, thank you. Yeah, thanks to my, my fellow council members, and thanks to city secretary and city manager and city attorney for the support that I needed at times to try to fulfill the obligations of this post. So, you're in good hands, you know, when you stumble like I do, I'll help you.
All right. All right, so we have a motion by Mayor Protem Emery, seconded by Councilmember Marulas. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
Member Boni. The motion carries unanimously.
All right, congratulations, Mayor Protem Klausser.
Mayor Protem Klausser.
Yeah, we'll make that ceremony at the January second. You have to give, yeah. Yes. Oh, I have to give you the tie, that's what they told me, to give it to you. I have one saved here for you. All right, item nine, our resolutions, nine A.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, confirming the city manager's appointment to the City of Missouri City Firefighters and Police Officers Civil Service Commission, providing for repeal and providing for severability.
All right, thank you. We have a presentation or conversation with Shawna. Go ahead.
Yes, I think they're getting my presentation together, but as they're getting the presentation together, as you all know, I serve as your human resources director, but I'm also serve as your civil service director, which I was appointed this year.
Can we put a timer?
No, don't take my time.
Now, I'm trying to get the presentation.
Okay.
Yeah, while it gets ready, you wanna just talk.
All right. So, as we're getting the presentation together, pursuant to the special election held on November third, November 3rd, 2020, the voters of the City of Missouri City voted to adopt Chapter 143 of the Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 143. Chapter 143 governs municipal civil service for firefighters and police officers. Civil Service Commission minimum qualifications are set forth in Chapter 143. Pursuant to state law, the city manager is required to appoint three commissioners with the confirmation of city council. The Civil Service Commission consists of three commissioners, each serving staggered terms. The term of Ms. Wanda Johnson, who currently serves as the vice chair of the Civil Service Commission, will end on December 31st of this year. She did decide not to reapply, and she expressed her gratitude of serving on the commission and serving the citizens of the City of Missouri City. City, city staff members conducted interviews with all applicants that were interested in the Civil Service Commission position. We had six applicants to apply, and from that interview panel, we had the HR department, the legal department, the police department, and a representative with the Police Officers' Association, the fire department, and a representative from the Fire Advisory Committee. As a result of the thorough interview process, city manager Jones has appointed Gustavo Rodriguez to serve as a commissioner. City manager Jones seeks council confirmation of Mr. Rodriguez to serve on the Civil Service Commission, position three, to serve a three-year term, beginning January 1st, 2024, ending December 31st, 2026. Mr. Rodriguez is a committed resident for over six years and resides in District D, and he has also joined us here at the city council meeting. If you all have any questions or just would like to simply say hello, so we'd like to just bring them up.
Thank you, Shawna. So, do we, is there a motion? Calling for a motion. It's been a motion by Councilmember Klausser and seconded by Councilmember Riley. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote. Or, wait, before you vote, the Councilmember Boni.
Oh, Mayor, I was just gonna say, I would like to hear from the candidate, Mr. Rodriguez. How are you? If you could just tell us a little bit about, I mean, I read your, your resume, but I'd like to hear a little bit about yourself and why you're seeking to serve in this important role.
Of course. Well, good evening, Mayor, and city council members. It is an honor to be here before you. As far as my background, I do work for Fort Bend Independent School District. I am a director of transportation for Lake Olympia, Lake Olympia Terminal. I have been here for about six years, and I have served, what is the Missouri City University? I, I went through the process, and I've learned a lot in regards to different departments, the in and outs, and it's very intriguing, very interesting. I've learned a lot, and I'm always willing and wanting to expand my knowledge and to learn more and to be more engaged. And if I'm able to help in this position, it will be a pleasure, and it will be an honor for me.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Seeing no one else on the queue, we have a motion by Councilmember Mayor Protem Klausser, seconded by Councilmember Riley. Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right. Well, thank you. Congratulations.
Welcome.
Item nine B.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, casting its ballot for the election of a person to the Board of Directors of the Harris County, Harris Central Appraisal District.
Okay, thank you. Crystal?
Mr. Mayor, this is a appointment that needs to be done each year or every two years. Mike Sullivan is the only person that has been nominated for this board position to represent the cities.
Okay. I see a motion by Councilmember Boni, seconded by Councilmember Riley. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Item nine C.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, casting its votes for the election of members of the Board of Directors of the Fort Bend Central Appraisal District for the two-year term commencing on January 1st, 2024, and other provisions related thereto.
Okay. See a motion by Councilmember Boni.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to actually cast all of our 101 votes for Pam Gaskin. Reason being, Pam is the only one on this list of five that is living in Missouri City and also actively involved in Missouri City. She currently serves on the Missouri City Construction Board of Appeals, and she's been in this community for many, many, many years, and she's very active. And I, you know, I think that we had this discussion last time about the respective candidates, but I have no problem casting all of our 101 votes just for Pam Gaskin.
Okay, thank you. I, I signed up myself for this. So, E. Joyce or Crystal? So, the vote for the CAD, how many, how many people were proposed?
There are five, there are five nominations for the board. Actually, these are the people that, that the cities are voting for, which is Pamela Gaskin, Jim Key, Jim Rice, Michael Rosell, and Paul Statnis.
Right. So, to the point of Councilmember Boni, I'm... I myself also only know Pam Gaskin. And I've asked through your office to see if other people could, other people that's been nominated by other cities or by whoever it is to come forward, um, or come at least say hello to the city council that we will be voting on so, so that at least we know who we're voting for.
Right.
Because the, one of the issues that I find that's troublesome, as you heard it in our, our public comments today, is city council of Missouri City and other cities, actually, I'm not speaking for other cities, but do often get blamed for, uh, when we reduce taxes, CAD raises, uh, property values and it goes up, and it ends up being something that City of Missouri City Council did. Because of that, this is why I've asked to see at least if members of that council or the board to be voted on, if they can be here today, right? So at least we know who they are. I, I mean, I can't speak for others up here, but I do know Ms. Pam as well. Um, and she's a Missouri City resident. It doesn't really matter where you live. I mean, you know, but I can only vote for one that I know. And I was, if the voting was for everybody, I was gonna abstain myself from that because I, I like to vote for people that I know. So at least I can talk to when residents bring up these issues of property values going up and it fluctuates. It, it directly goes opposite to what we're trying to do when we raise, uh, and when we lower down our taxes. So I have one clarification for E. Joyce and Councilmember Boni is the vote that we're taking right now, the motion that you have in place, is to vote for only one member, which is Pam, Ms. Pam Gaskin.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So basically, there are a hundred and one votes that we're allocated, and we have to, we can divvy all those up amongst all five. We can only give some to three, four, two. But I'm saying that, uh, my motion is all one hundred and one votes solely for Pam Gaskin.
All right, thank you. Recognizing Mayor Protem Clauser.
Is it a hundred, a hundred and one? A hundred votes, I apologize.
I, I just wanted to echo, um.
It's one oh one, okay.
Here it says a hundred.
On the ballot, it says one oh one, yeah.
Okay, well, the resolution says a hundred. So it is a hundred? Or is it a hundred?
I show, I show a hundred and one. I think that may have been a typo.
Okay.
Okay, Mayor Protem Clauser.
Yes, I just wanna, to my colleagues, I just wanna echo the sentiments of, um, Councilmember Boni and, uh, Mayor about Pam Gaskin. I've known Pam Gaskin for over, uh, over twenty years, and I know her hard work here in the city. I know her work ethic. And, um, I definitely am in support of us utilizing all of our votes for, uh, Ms. Pamela Gaskin.
Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Marulis.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I, I support the thought of having a Missouri City resident. But when I look at it from a board standpoint, and if they're an electing body, it would help to have two people up there that could kind of work together, second, um, a, a motion and whatnot. And so I was gonna ask if maybe we should include Jim Rice, because he also knows Fort Bend. So if, if it's a board and someone makes a motion, at least those two could represent us by seconding that motion. Does that make sense? But that's, I, I'm good with what Boni put out there. I was just thinking kind of a larger picture to have two people from Fort Bend County representing us than just one.
So, um, before we get to others, E. Joyce, I have a motion on the table by Councilmember Boni. I've not received a second yet. Well, now I did, Mayor, uh, Protem Clauser. So were your motion to amend?
It was, I mean, I want to like to get feedback from that. I'm good with where we're going with it, but I was just thinking like bigger picture. I see us here, right? So if you don't have somebody on that team to second a motion, that one person could be left alone.
Sure, all right. Recognizing Councilmember Boni.
Yeah, I, I, I know Jim Rice as well, and, uh, uh, the thing about it is, you know, I think it goes back to, uh, hearing from those individuals and, and getting a better understanding of their thought processes, their philosophies. And I can't say that I know that about, uh, to be honest, any of them. Uh, you know, at this point, as far as how they view, how they would view going into assessing appraise, you know, doing the appraise value. They're the ones, keep in mind, that hire the, uh,
Right.
the individual who actually does this. Uh, and so I think those individuals, you have to think about, you know, having people in there that are thoughtful and mindful. And I don't know that I can hear, uh, uh, well, excuse me, see how they're gonna vote or how they're gonna move, how they're gonna make decisions. So I think that for me, uh, I'm more comfortable having at least one person that I know and have known, and yeah, put all those eggs in one basket. And, you know, I mean, on the other positions, then, you know, of course, they're gonna be decided regardless. We're only one city, and I just feel comfortable with that individual.
Okay.
It would be helpful to have some sort of, uh, Q and A or something that we receive, especially if they can't come before us and answer our questions like Miss, Mr. Rodriguez did for us today.
Agreed.
Right. Thank you. I, I just placed myself on the queue one more time. Uh, Crystal, just walk the council through so the public would know too. What did you do to reach out to these Fort Bend CAD, uh, board members to be elected? And what was that conversation like?
Okay, so, um, originally, because we, the council had not met, um, any of the, um, the candidates for the board, I did reach out to Fort Bend County Appraisal District on numerous occasions and sent emails, um, asking for the chief appraiser to come and, um, give a presentation to the council. Um, the chief appraiser never responded back to me with, um, a specific time or even responded back to me at all. So previously, the council decided not to nominate anyone for this particular board. Um, so with that, these five, um, these five candidates are for five positions. So basically, um, the other cities, um, that submitted their nominations, um, these are basically the people that they all agreed on. Um, I have asked the appraisal district, um, to next year, submit, um, information to us in advance. So council will have the opportunity to, um, speak with the candidates and to also, um, be, have enough time to nominate others if you so desire.
Okay, thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Brown Marshall.
Thank you so much. Um, I had an opportunity to speak with Ms. Gaskin on last Friday, and she is still very, very much interested in serving on this, uh, particular board. But with regards to the other candidates, um, Jim K I J, don't want to miss, uh, say his name wrong, along with Michael D. Rose, Rosel, and Paul, they are all currently serving on, on the board, uh, now as well. But I too have no problem with, um, going along with the recommendation of Councilman Boni and sending over our one hundred and one, since we, uh, I, I personally do know Ms. Pam Gaskin. And, um, but she is definitely, um, in, you know, wanting to serve us for certain.
Sure. Thank you. I've signed up myself one more time to clarify this issue, um, to the public that every time Fort Bend CAD goes out there and raise your property evaluations, which means goes up in dollars, um, of course, your tax gets affected with that. The first people that they, the, our residents, you know, likely would call is the city staff or your city council and complain about this. And when we are to make a decision along with other cities, uh, all eighteen cities in the Fort Bend County, we are just one out of eighteen. So the request by, was to ask the city secretary to talk with the chief appraiser officer, to have these member, these board members that are being considered to vote, to appear at least to Missouri City Council. So this way, we can at least see who this is, or at least know that person, or shake their hands, or get to know that person. To me, as a resident first, not as a mayor, my also property evaluation have gone up, just like others. And I'm also looking around to trying to find who the appointed officials are. So this way, I can have that conversation. But what happens with it is to the residents, go use a complaint form and file a complaint, uh, and hopefully you'll have a hearing, and you can get your property, uh, valuation reduced a little bit. And that's what tend to happen. So I myself, being the mayor, now wearing the mayor hat back, is if I don't even know who I'm voting for to be sitting up there, I don't think it's fair. Um, so that's the reason why, um, this vote's being considered. And the reason I support this motion by Councilmember Boni on one member whom I know that lives in this community, that I can pick up the phone or, or, or meet with that person and kind of discuss as to what's happening, or what, how did you get to this? Or, or at least invite that person to come and speak with our city manager and what have you. Without the others not knowing, they all had the equal opportunity to just show up today and just to show their face, just like one of the other board members that are, that got, just got voted in, and just to say hello, so we will know face to face and meet with that person. So likelihood that when the CAD comes out again, if the valuations go up, and every resident will be back at the city council asking for help, or what, what can we do? And that's why I wholeheartedly support the fact that we're giving hundred and one votes, all of our votes to, uh, one member, which is Pam Gaskin, whom most, I would assume that most of us know, at least so we can have an advocate on the Fort Bend CAD appraisal districts that we can speak to. Thank you. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and, there's a motion by Councilmember Boni, seconded by Mayor Protem Clauser. Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item number ten are city council announcements. We will go ahead and start with our announcements for the last meeting that we have with our A-Large Position One, Councilmember Sonia Brown Marshall.
Okay, thank you so much, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity. Um, first, I wanted to send out a great big congratulations on the opening of the Public Annex, uh, facility now up at Highway Six off of the Fort Bend Toll. I could not be present for the grand opening, but I've watched it via Facebook Live, and I enjoyed it just as much as like I was there. So I really appreciate whomever it was that had it on Facebook Live. Thank you so much. Um, my family and I are honored this year to have been able to support a couple of things for the Christmas holidays. Um, children without placement, um, children with incarcerated parents. We adopted a couple of families this year, and, um, and a couple of other things throughout, uh, for the Christmas holidays. To us, the Christmas holiday is truly about the spirit of giving, and we are incredibly thankful and blessed for the things and the opportunities that we have. And so we wanted to have an opportunity to give some things back. Also want to thank Mayor Alacad for providing a space, um, for us to have a snow fest parade event and tree lighting recap. Um, it was a great communication between, um, myself and Mayor and leaders of staff and the Parks Department on ways that we can make it even bigger and make it even grander in the years, um, coming forward. So I'm really looking forward to revisiting with that and moving forward on what we called our three, six, and nine month, um, check-in on it, so that next year it's even grander. Lastly, um, I just really wanted to give a big thank you to all of the staff, even to all of the colleagues up here. Um, we had some challenging and complex issues this year, but we met them with grace, positive attitudes, and the fortitude to work through them together. Some new ideas even emerged this year, and, um, we, we took those on as well, and it was really good. And I'm extremely proud and honored to work alongside of this team. Happy holidays to everyone, and I'll see you next year.
All right, thank you. Recognizing our A-Large Position Number Two, and Mayor Protem Lynn Clauser.
Thank you. Um, to Mayor and my colleagues, I just want to say thank you, to each one of you all for, um, your vote of confidence in me as the next Mayor Protem. Um, I'm ending my three years here, and I'll be starting my fourth, uh, next year. And it has been an honor to serve, and something that, um, Councilmember Brown Marshall said, the spirit of giving. This is the most giving council that I have known Missouri City to have. And, um, you know, at the, the very last council meeting, for us to have someone to come here and, and say all these things about us, one thing that I will say is those things are not true. And I want to say thank you to each one of my colleagues. We are active in the community. Uh, I know you all probably sometimes get tired of seeing us, but we do what we do from our hearts because we love, uh, we love our city and we love what we do. Yeah, we may make some decisions that may not be popular, but we, we, we like each other and we work well together, and so, um, we have one common goal. Um, so thank you, colleagues. I'm looking forward to serving. Um, I attended several events. Two that I want to, uh, bring up, myself and Mayor Alacad, each year, we, um, we personally sponsor the VFW Post. Um, we, their families and the veterans, we, uh, provide a holiday meal for them. And we did that on Saturday. Unfortunately, Mayor Alacad was a little sick, and, um, Floyd Emery, Councilmember Emery, uh, came in, and we just had a good time and, uh, provided food, and, um, they sang carols, and we played bingo. And it was just a reminder of how special our community, our veterans in our community are and their families. Um, I want to thank Double Dave's Pizza and also Rich's Products for, uh, their donations to the event. I attended, um, Commissioner Grady's annual Black Tie Affair at the epicenter. Um, I also attended the Missouri City Green, uh, their partnership launch program at Texas Legal Brewery. Our Small Business Advisory Committee had their holiday mixer, and I want to thank all of my colleagues for showing up to that. We had about eighty people in attendance. And, um, kudos to, um, owner-operator Tony Levine and former, uh, college football coach for, uh, being our fabulous keynote speaker. He said he had about fifty business owners that came up to him afterwards just seeking his advice and, uh, needing help with their business. So, um, that was absolutely the right move to have him there to speak a little life into our small business owners. Um, I attended the Public Safety Annex Grand Opening. Also, uh, myself and Councilmember Boni attended the Kwanzaa, uh, Ojima Collective Candle Lighting Ceremony. And, um, I just want to say thank you, uh, for allowing me to serve, and Merry Christmas to each one of you, and be safe.
Thank you. Uh, recognizing Councilmember of District A, Monica Riley.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to say first off to the staff, to our city managers, city secretaries, city, uh, attorney, all of our assistant city managers and staff and directors. Chiefs, thank y'all so much from the top of our organization, all the way to our janitors and everybody in between, in between. I am so grateful for you guys. Y'all work so hard every single day. Y'all show up. You have smiles on your faces. Y'all are always so polite and professional. And with that, I want to say thank you very much for allowing us to serve you as you guys have served us. Um, and to my colleagues, uh, Councilmember Boni, Mayor Protem, Lynn Clauser, uh, former Mayor Protem, and Councilmember District D, Floyd Emery, Mayor Alacad, Councilmember Marulis, and Councilwoman Sonia Brown Marshall. Thank you guys so much for, uh, allowing me to serve with you guys. I've had so much fun on this council. I'm looking forward to the many times that we'll continue to serve together, make good decisions together, and make decisions that our residents may not necessarily agree with. But I think that we're doing it from a good place and with executive, you know, thought process in that. And so thank you, guys, and I appreciate y'all so very much. Um, I want to say thank you personally to Walter Gant. Um, when you first joined council, not joined council, when you first joined, uh, the city, I took you on a tour, and I just want to say personally, thank you for the work that you've done to address a lot of the problem areas in District A. There were a lot of them. I'm seeing lands cleared off, grasses being mowed, and people keeping up their properties. And so from a personal thank you, uh, so much, Walter, you've gone the extra mile, and your work is not unnoticed. It is greatly appreciated across the city. Uh, but definitely, I get so many reports from District A residents to say thank you so very much. I appreciate you. I attended a lot of events this month. My family and I were blessed to sponsor, um, several events, the Dubway Foundation. My family and I were blessed to sponsor, um, several events, the Double Way Foundation Christmas in the Park, as well as, um, our Arc Angels. We have a new adoption agency in Fort Bend County that we were able to be a part of. I attended the small business. Um, I wore my best, um, ugly sweater. Um, you guys can check that out on Facebook. Um, and then I just want to, I want to close out by saying congratulations to my daughter Sherrell, who graduated top of her class from University of Houston. Um, as I, so I got my fourth bachelor's and I got a master's under my belt. So congratulations, Sherrell. I'm so proud of you. And also to wish my daughter Serena today a happy, happy birthday. I love you guys. Everybody have a happy, happy Christmas and a merry, merry, blessed New Year.
All right, thank you. Recognizing District B Councilmember Jeffrey Elbon.
Thank you, Mayor. I gotta start off and give a shout out to my middle baby, Jasmine Sinclair Boni, on earning her bachelor's degree in accounting from the University of Houston Downtown. Let's all give her a round of applause, everybody, so she can hear y'all. Anyway, I'm, I'm very proud of her. We got the newest accountant in the family, so I'm very, very godly proud of her. Well, this is the second, uh, bachelor's, uh, of the children, and so we're working on the third. I wanted to thank, uh, Shashi. I want to thank, uh, City Attorney, uh, Yamu and the City Manager Jones on the Fort Bend Mud, uh, twenty-six board meetings that we've attended thus far, along with Mayor Alacad joining us on the first one. You know, we have some, some, some things we're working through with that, and it's our hope that we can get past them, so we can help move Missouri City forward, uh, with our development and some of the things happening in, uh, you know, off Texas Parkway and Cartwright. Also attended the CDAG meeting, uh, that was very productive. Also attended two of Commissioner Grady prestigious events, his Cajun Creole Holiday Party at the Landmark Community Center and his Black Tide Party Event way out in Rosenberg, but it was a grand affair. I saw my colleagues, uh, Councilwoman Clauser and Councilwoman Brown Marshall. Councilwoman Brown Marshall, you was on the floor getting it.
I was getting it.
Oh, yeah, you were getting it. I saw you. I say you, until that one song came on, you had to come sit down. Uh, also attended State Representative Ron Reynolds District Twenty-Seven Annual Holiday Party in Toy Drive, uh, the Missouri City Kwanzaa Candle Lighting Event, uh, as a participant, the Public Safety Annex opening. I also attended Texas Legislative, uh, Black Caucus's fiftieth anniversary celebration in Austin. Chair Reynolds, uh, you know, put on a grand affair and honored many outstanding Texans, including, uh, Fort Bend County Attorney Bridget Smith Lawson, as well as Fort Bend County Tax Assessor Collector, uh, Carmen Turner. Uh, also attended the Missouri City, uh, Green Event, as well as the Ugly Sweater, uh, event. I think I won, cause, uh, you know, I had the, the best ugly sweater. I don't know what you had on. She had on a, a sign that said, this is my ugly sweater. That was cool. Uh, lastly, uh, we did the holiday video shoot, and that kind of leads me to the end of my comments. You know, the best part of the, this time of year, uh, for me is making memories. Uh, we always, as a family, we get together and wear our pajamas on Christmas Day and open our gifts and have a great time. But, uh, I just want to say here's hoping for peace. Enjoy this holiday season for all of you. Here's wishing you much happiness and prosperity in the year ahead, and I pray that all of you enjoy the blessing of hope and gratitude that this holiday brings. God bless all of you and God bless Missouri City.
Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember of District C, Anthony Marulis.
Congrats, Mayor Protem Clauser. Three years in the making. I'm super happy for you. Uh, tonight was a great night for presentations and recognition. Uh, what struck me was there was a bunch of youth here, the young, the future of Missouri City. Uh, the mayor's youth commission, Angel, obviously does not know they'll be participating in the state of the city, but I know the mayor will voluntarily tell them. But it was really, it's really awesome to see, uh, the youth in our city come forward and lead, uh, at this time. I know last week we celebrated Angel's one-year anniversary, but I also want to take a moment to celebrate the staff for having one year of success, one year of stability, one year of progress, one year of positive culture, and I'm super pumped up about that. So thank you all for all that. And, um, I had a video and I, it just came upon me, but we have a lot in store in 2024, and I'm looking forward to 2024. Finally, uh, thank you Anchor CM, they're a construction company in Missouri City who've, they're doing parks for us, but doing a lot for the community. They actually helped me and Destiny Church helped me, and my wife and kids helped to provide, um, twenty kids and three families Christmas gifts who would have not gotten gifts. And there were tears in the room, there was joy in the room, there was prayer in the room, and I just want to thank those two people, Destiny Church, Scott Nichols and, uh, Brock Bly at Anchor CM. Finally, congratulations to Officer Yudell for Officer of the Year. Uh, I know Saul also got the Supervisor of the Year or something like that, uh, but, um, super happy for Officer. And there's a lot of other people who receive recognition, but, uh, I know Officer Yudell, he, he's awesome, so congrats. That's my comments.
All right, thank you. Recognizing Councilmember of District D, Floyd Emery.
First, I'd like to, uh, again, uh, congratulate, uh, Council Lady Lynn Clauser as a newly-elected Mayor Protem. I know she'll carry the, uh, uh, the position, uh, with, with great honor. I also, uh, attended with, uh, Mayor Protem Clauser the Veterans Dinner or Luncheon, uh, for, at Post Forty Ten. Uh, there was a good turnout, and again, it's a way of, uh, of, uh, showing, uh, our gratitude to, uh, our veterans, uh, that, uh, have served, uh, and some served, uh, with, with distinction and honor. Happy holidays, uh, uh, to the staff and, uh, council and mayor, uh, and, uh, our public safety, uh, uh, staff. I mean, they, uh, have done yeoman's work. Uh, they started out with very little and we're, uh, getting to the point where we, I, I think are getting up to, uh, either compliment or close to compliment. So still have a lot of work to do, but, uh, again, I want to wish them a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. Also to the LGC staff, they normally don't get much recognition, but, uh, Kelly O'Donnell has done, uh, yeoman's work over, uh, at, uh, Quail Valley and picking up the, uh, the reins that, uh, were left by, uh, uh, long-serving, uh, uh, General Manager Tyson Steilberg. Uh, and, uh, I think he's, uh, done well in the, the amount of time that he, uh, has been with us, and I look for great things out of the LGC staff. They're, uh, they're hard workers. I attended the, uh, ribbon cutting for the city annex, minute left. The, uh, Missouri City Exchange Club, uh, has a program where, uh, we, uh, ask, uh, the Bethel Ministries down on Fifth Street to give us, uh, eight families that are in, uh, in need and probably, uh, won't have a very, uh, uh, eventful, uh, Christmas or, from standpoint of, uh, presence and recognition. So, uh, the Exchange Club, uh, sponsored those eight, uh, eight, uh, um, families, and it's about, uh, forty kids that are involved, so hopefully, uh, forty, uh, kids have, uh, will have, uh, a, a present underneath a tree. So it's something the Exchange Club has done for a number of years and will continue to do that, so. And, uh, again, thanks to, uh, my colleagues for putting up with me for a year as Mayor Protem, and I, it was an honor that I truly, uh, honored and, uh, and appreciated. So those are my comments.
All right, thank you.
All right, um, similar comments. I mean, if you have not been to our Public Safety Annex, please do so. Uh, it is beautiful. There's a lot of works done by, uh, our facilities, our maintenance and our IT. Uh, thanks to all for making that happen. And, you know, when we were out there at the Officers, uh, Awards and Recognition, we have heard from several officers, we, we heard it was gonna be nice, not sure how nice it was until we got there, so. And then as you go in there, you'll see a back office and it says Officer Dench on it, uh, at the top, and I, I took a picture of it and see, uh, so I think someone told me that was permanent, so not sure. Uh, but I want to thank Officer Dench and Officer Jefferson for being here today. Thank you so much. Missouri City, what a year. What a remarkable year. Fifty-five ribbon cuttings this year, uh, to date. So I want to thank my colleagues who are up here for, and I did count, fifty-five, um, for being here, uh, for supporting a lot of these businesses and going out, uh, out of your way to make things happen. I don't think three, four years ago, we could possibly think of having fifty-five new businesses here. And I don't think it's just only based on the city council. I think it's based on the growth, it's based on the staff, it's based on everyone working together as a team to make things happen from Missouri City. Uh, as you heard earlier today, talk about consistency, we had our city manager celebrated her first year on December fifth, so we're excited to have that. Having our city manager, having our city secretary, having our city attorney, all working together, it, it actually grow us as seven of us who are here today to make things happen for this city. And of course, our leadership team, our directors, our managers, our supervisors, uh, to every employee who's here today. Thank you so much for a great, great year. To our boards and commission and to the volunteers, to NYC, to every other group that we have in our city, uh, even though we don't call you out all the time, we thank you for your service. Um, and remember, we do appreciate you for serving. We understand that, it's a lot of time that you commit to that, so we want to thank you for being here. This year, uh, about a week ago, we kicked off Shop Local, Eat Local, Play Local Campaign, and I hope that during this holiday season, that you come out and you support our local business, that you support our local, be out there to eat local and shop local and play local in Missouri City. Lastly, I also want to take, there's so many that, that make our city run excellent. It has nothing to do with the mayor, has nothing to do with just the city council. It has to do with every single employee, every single volunteer, every single board member, uh, boards and commission members that are here to make the city grow the way it is. Lastly, if you celebrate, whatever you celebrate, happy holidays to you, happy Hanukkah, happy Kwanzaa, and a Merry Christmas to each and every one of you and your families for this wonderful year. We'll be, this is our last meeting. We'll be back on January second with a hope of, for New Year in 2024, that we can accomplish just as much as things that we accomplished this year, and furthermore. With that, thank you so much. At number thirteen is to adjourn this meeting at eight twenty-six P M.